I would entertain a motion to open the Selectman's Meeting of November 18th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good allegiance.
My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As most of you know, we have lost one of our Selectmen. And I would like to have a moment of silence for Dave Mountain, who was a very good friend to the town and a good friend of all of ours. All right, are there any board and committee reports? Seeing none.
Oh, I didn't have a...
Go ahead.
Well, I don't have all the information for the report, but I went out to be volunteering for the sand dune restoration.
Good.
And we had...
With Greg Moore.
With Greg Moore.
And we have an H.
And we had a number of volunteers, both locally from Newbury and Newburyport, and also people coming from New Hampshire and Rockton, I think.
Yep.
It was a pretty great turnout, got a lot of work done, and they were very happy. And a lot of the people walking the beach were very enthusiastic about what was going on, so... She said, Allison, who was in charge of that day, said she'd get me the numbers about how many people were actually participating, how much...
Good, really good.
How much fence was put up, which I wanted to report, but I haven't actually got those numbers today.
When... What Damon's talking about is Greg Moore is a PhD from Jackson Labs, UNH, and Greg is a person that I also work with on the marsh, and he's quite a guy. And he approached the town not too long ago with the ability, with a grant from Coastal Zone Management, to do creative plantings on Palmyra Island and creative use of snow fence. And it's a little different, it's going to include a broad palette of plants and also different ways perpendicular, parallel zigzags of fencing. And I guess it's enough of a crea... It's also going to be part of the Sandy Grant, so it's a very significant way to do things. The grant that, you know, I happen to also be involved in, he's going to take that planting procedure up through DCR property up into Salisbury, so, you know, what Damon was talking about uses local help. It gets people to appreciate how things are done locally, and it's really quite a process, and hopefully it traps and manages sand and, you know, creates our primary dune, which is so significantly important for storm surge protection on Palmyra Island. So, thanks, Damon. Any citizens' concerns? Hearing and seeing none? Public hearings? We have none. And tonight, I will remember the town administrator's report.
Okay. I'll make a brief report this evening. I'm pleased to welcome Joanne Moore to our finance department team. She did accept the position and began her employment on October 14th, so feel free to introduce yourself to her when you have an opportunity. The municipal building committee will be holding the first workshop on this Saturday, November 22nd at 10:00 AM. The point is to basically inform the residents of the facility issues at the police station and at town hall. We will be providing tours of the facilities for anyone that's interested. We'll... We're going to hold a series of them, this will be the first one. Wanted to let you know, too, that we've begun negotiations with the Newbury Police Association for the collective bargaining agreement that will be going into effect July 1, 2015. I started a little bit earlier this year in hopes of having a fully executed contract prior to entering into the budget season, so we'll be able to budget accordingly. Also executed the contract with Beta Engineering for the town hall pump station and the force main design and construction services, and we expect to begin the work immediately on that. And also just wanted to update you, the Deb Rogers, the health agent, and I met with the Newbury Recreation Committee and were able to finalize the manor field septic system plans with the committee voting in favor. So the next step would be to put together the specifications and go out to bid for the project so that work could commence in the spring.
Do you have a completion date or estimate from Beta Engineering?
The goal is to have a construction estimate to go to the May Town meeting for the actual construction of the system.
All right. New business, heading into new business. We have a request by John Lucy, and Mike's here tonight, and I'm sure it's a request from Mike to... For Reserve Dispatcher Christina Propolo?
Popolo.
Popolo. And Mike, I'll let you take it from there.
Another Reserve Dispatcher, Christina's a Byfield resident, she's undergone an extensive background and a psychological, and I think she'd be a great fit for the police department, very nice person.
Great. So, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike. Next and second under new business is a request from Sam Jocelyn, he's not here tonight. However, it seems, and I'm sure Tracy can explain it to me if I need any clarity, but it seems that everything has gone to online electronic permitting system, which allows the contractors to take a permit, things from home, actually from mobile devices, I imagine, so they can... You know, it's much more expeditious. So, for those people that are wanting to use paper or have to use paper, it has to now be manually entered by the office, I imagine, out back, and they're asking for a $15 fee for that process, for the process of the electronic, for the manual electronic entry. So, we probably can have a motion and discussion if we need it. Is there a motion to accept?
I make a mo... I move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Any clarity needed?
I think it makes sense and should streamline the office, so...
Yep. And it sounds... And it sounds good to me, too. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll be voting, I said, like I said, because Chuck will be here a little later. We have a new business license, and John, is that you? It's... I'll let you get up and explain a little bit. We have a new business license from John Amo?
DeSamo.
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 And it's at 89 Hanover Street, and you're going to be involved in personal training?
Yes.
Can you give us a little idea of what it is and all the paperwork? Alan's in order, everything seems to be good. So, that being said?
Well, personal training, I train people to meet their goals. I have a full setup with all the equipment in the unit right now.
Yep.
I've been doing it for 28 years.
Long enough, right?
Yeah. So, yes.
So, did you have anything? Were you going to continue?
Um, that's...
You've got enough, good. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions we want to ask, John?
So, is it... You're teaching people running, weightlifting, what sort of...
Weightlifting mainly, yeah.
Weightlifting.
Losing weight, right in the studio.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yes. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
We have a one-day liquor license for protection, too. And as was the tradition, I will turn to Alan and ask Alan, is everything in order?
Everything in order.
It seems pretty expensive and everything's right.
Actually, there were some things I saw on that that were not in order.
What was it?
So, one thing I talked to Mike about, the police department did not sign off on it, and we asked everyone else to have the police sign off on it.
I think that was only if there was a detail involved.
I... My understanding was the police had to sign off on all of our liquor licenses now, but maybe that was a misunderstanding.
Well, Mike, you want to sign off on this while you're here?
I have no...
Yeah, he said he would sign off on it, I just...
And then we'll find out if there's no detail involved, whether we have to have them.
Yeah, I just didn't want to be doing one thing for Fire Two and other things for other people.
So you don't have a problem with that, where it's right next door?
And then I wasn't sure about issues four and five, describe the manner in which the alcohol will be served, I didn't see that anywhere, or the floor plan. I mean, we all know what it looks like over there and how it will be done, but I didn't see it in the form.
Have they presented that to you before, Alan? I mean, is that on file?
I'm not going to...
All right.
Happy they've had that on file.
But, and that's probably...
I'd have to look.
How time sensitive is this? Because we, you know, if Damon's...
The local party is the 6th of December.
6th of December.
So, I'd be happy to do what we've done in the past, which is approve it on the conditions that they submit these things, which will be no problem for them to do. I just was reading through it this afternoon, said I don't see that in this packet, and I don't see this in the packet, so...
Well, I think that's good. So, make a... I'll entertain a motion, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit, provided they get the signature from Mike if required, and describe... And complete items four and five on the permit.
All right, do I hear a second? Did you second it, Mike?
No, I didn't.
Before we discuss anything, can we just have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to leave an explanation. In other words, what is this going to do?
I think what's going on, Damon kind of, you know, did his homework. This is a new system. I think when the new system is applied to some people that have done this quite a bit, it might be presupposed that some of these things are already done, but if it seems like we're going to have to do them and have them in the file, or Damon's going to grab us, then every time, we'll get, we'll put them in the file. All right, so... And what Damon has requested for a motion would be he's fine with anything they want to do, because it's time sensitive and it is a party and they're asking to do... If, can, you know, if we pass this, it's... What's the word now? I'm having a mental blank, quick. Contend...
Contingent.
Contingent, thank you, Tracy. Contingent on the fact that they produce what he's asked.
Yep.
And I think that's good.
Yeah, and I just... I mean, the other thing is we don't want to appear like we give Fire Two a break and everyone else has to do the whole thing.
Totally, no, totally in agreement. So, you seconded that, can I go along? Do you have anything else? Any other discussion?
Sorry.
So, any other discussion? Chuck, you okay? You kind of coming up to speed?
No, I'm not up to speed on that.
Go ahead. What it was Damon kind of looked and saw, we didn't maybe have the police signature?
Okay.
We're going to find out if we need the police signature, if we don't need a detail. Also, you know, we're just getting used to doing these, and Damon noticed that four and five, how it will be served and where and what the place looks like with the diagrams, which we've seen in these things before. So, he has suggested contingent on those things being produced, that certainly the license could be granted, and Mike seconded it, and I'm about ready to ask for a vote. You okay now?
Okay.
All right.
How do you feel about it?
Huh? He's right there.
No objections? I have no objections to signing off on it.
You even volunteered to sign it right now.
So... All those in favor of granting the one-day liquor license?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Now, that seemed pretty easy, so wait till we get to this one.
That was this one, right?
Kathy Bugg?
Yeah, Kathy at the Beach Coma has sent us a letter to request to be included in some of the things that are going forward. I guess it might be a little different for a restaurant. Now, what this is, is she's requested that she can section... Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 38B, known as the Restaurant Rejuvenation Act, a brunch provision, which would allow restaurants to be open at 10:00 AM so they can be involved in opening a little earlier on holidays and Sundays to accommodate brunch. And I certainly have no trouble at all, at least for me, and... But as we started into trying to understand this, I'm going to let Tracy explain a little. It seems that town council has recommended that it could have to go to a town meeting, and then if it was accepted, then we as a licensing board would still have to issue it on a case-to-case basis, but what... What did you find when you asked?
Yeah, it was Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33B, and she said the local licensing authority of any town that accepts this particular section, which would require town meeting action, assuming town meeting approved it, you would then have the authority to, you know, authorize licenses under this particular law. So what, I believe what Kathy was asking was that you would consider taking this up at the May Town meeting.
So, that being said, would we have a motion to probably ask to have this put onto the warrant for the Spring Town meeting? Would that be the right way to put it?
So would this be like the tax exemptment that we just passed at the last special town meeting?
You'd have to... It's a local option, according to...
Have to opt-in do it before we can actually do it.
You'd have to opt-in, and then that would give you the authority as the licensing board to say yes or no.
I think it's giving the town a little bit of a save first.
Hmm. And this is different than the beverage sales that we've extended?
I don't know that it's different.
Oh, so we may have already granted some stuff we should not have granted.
Those are the things that we did last week. Well, we should find that out.
She's coming in next week.
Yep. And that'll be easy to take care of.
Yep.
All right, so do we have a...
I make a motion that we... Should we table this until the attorney's here?
Oh, it's got to go anyway before the board.
Okay.
I mean, it's got to get on the... I mean, I don't have any reason... Unless, let's discuss it, make a motion, we'll second it, make end discussion.
I'll make a motion that we put this on the May Town meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion, let's discuss it.
I guess the only reason not to do that would be if it's wrong, and then we can take it off the agenda again.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to get it out and ready to go on.
Sure.
So that at least the town has a chance to decide, you know, whether they want it or not. So those, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops, I don't have to vote anymore. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Now, I've written this on my other one. We have an appointment, and this is something that kind of happened, so I have to move this in such a way. We have what's called a cultural council in the town of Newbury, and the council... Cultural council, as I understand it, every town has a cultural council, and the cultural council has the ability to go after a certain grant that seems to be awarded to all towns as the cultural council asks, and the cultural council has the ability to accept from sections of schools, council and agent, maybe the Bi Field Art Center, maybe the Corel Society, for them to be able to apply for small amounts of money to help what they are doing with the projects that they have at hand. So I guess they've got some requests coming up pretty soon, and they need to have a... Another person on the council, so we've been asked to see if we would make an appointment to that board. Is that person here tonight?
He is not.
All right. How time sensitive is what they're... What they have to vote on?
They're meeting this Thursday.
This Thursday? Well, we've usually, before we make an appointment to boards, we've asked to have that person here. What's the definition of a council? So... But for most boards, we've asked that the person here, right? So, what do you want to do, guys? Where this is a council and probably not a board or committee?
From his letter, he seems qualified. And often when we have people here, we just read the letter they... In any way, and we'd... So I wouldn't see it as... You know, if it's going to deny the cultural council the ability to get a grant and hand out money to people in town, I don't see it being a necessary stumbling block.
About down the way.
I'm reading the letter now. Seems enthusiastic to do it.
And I guess it's hard for them to find people to sit on this council where it's... I think it's not as glamorous as most, so although it seems like it would be a nice way to be involved. So, Mike, you have anything that... You okay?
I'm okay.
So can I entertain a...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess we've already had it. Any more discussion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we go on to special election, actually, you know what? Why don't we bring it up at the end of new business, okay? We'll close new business, so...
Yeah, okay.
Because it has... This is all very much involved in the same thing.
Yeah.
With the passing of David Mountain, we now have a situation where it really is incumbent on everyone to be here when we suit, you know, when we have to vote on some of these issues that have to have, you know, a majority of four out of five. And we only have the ability to miss one meeting, and you can watch that on TV, but if you have... If you miss more than one meeting, you know, they could actually probably get a project as of right. So, what we have in front of us tonight now is a question for the board as to what they feel about we have enough time to call a special election for David's position. So, Tracy, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Only that I had an opportunity to meet with the town clerk, and if you were to decide that you did want to move forward with calling a special election, the tentative election date would be February 10th, and that would allow enough time for, you know, absentee applications, printing ballots.
It's pretty complicated, absentee ballots...
Yep, yep.
Last day for nominations, submitting nomination papers...
Right.
Filing nomination papers, objective, withdraw, register voter. So all that thing, that's...
Yep.
Tracy's been good, or Leslie's been good enough to put together all the numbers telling us exactly to the day of when we could do it.
Right.
So... And David probably has almost two years of his term left, right? All right, so that's what we have for us. Why don't we make a motion, and then we can discuss what we would like to do? So I'd entertain a motion.
To call a special election to fill the seat vacated by David Mountain.
All right, we have a second on that. Any discussion?
Be what, three months early, basically?
It would be, you know, what is it, May 2nd? When do we vote? When do...
It's usually the first week in May.
May, so...
Last time it was May 13th.
Second Tuesday, right? Yeah.
I mean, there could be a lot of, you know... Let's discuss, we're in a mode to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, it's... One of the concerns that I had, which is why I brought this forward, is the solar array issues that have come before us require the supermajority. I don't know if any other things are coming up that require the supermajority, and it seems like our functioning as a board could be inhibited by not doing it. But I don't know, since we can only get it done three months prior to the May election, you know, I don't know if it's worth it or not. You know, it seems important to me, but I don't know if the expense of...
Then he gets to run again, right?
No.
No, he will.
He'll have to run again in two years.
Two years?
Yep.
Yeah.
At the end of David's natural term, when that ended, he'd have to run again.
Yeah, I ran for the two-year term, the end of Bruce Saunders, and that's how I got my first term, was a two-year term for that. Now, as far as the solar array, we only have one on the books, right?
Yeah, there's the Yser project is...
Right.
Depending...
What's coming forward, but I just wasn't sure if there are other things that might come up. You know, it was... It was just a concern to me, so I wanted to bring it up and have the discussion. I don't know that it's necessarily the best use of funds, so I thought we should talk about it.
We figure it would cost about three grand to have the election.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, I think what part of it is, if Mike was feeling perfectly well, and if I wasn't going to go on vacation to duck camp, or, you know, I mean... But I mean, we certainly can function as three members if we had to, if Mike wasn't here or if someone was away.
Right.
But we've probably gotten a little used to having at least five people or four people here.
Mm-hmm.
Because it gives you depth of quality. We've got some folks here tonight, any people from the audience? Go ahead.
I had a question, because Damon brought up about supermajority as it related to like a solar...
I know what you're going to ask.
Now, if you're on the board, because one seat is empty...
Yep.
...define supermajority in that case.
No, supermajority is four out of four. It's of the number of members that participate.
And that's what's in town council.
Yep.
I asked the same question.
I'm just wondering if it changes those numbers.
Yeah.
It doesn't.
So you need to have four.
Yeah.
So we can unanimous decision at that point instead of a supermajority.
Which is never that easy. What are you thinking? What do you think, Buck?
I... I can hear both sides of this argument.
Yeah.
The cost, the expense, the energy expended to gain three months with not knowing what the outcomes... It's a tough one. I can hear both sides of this argument. Sorry, not helpful.
Go ahead, Mike.
I always think of the L-word, liability, and we certainly want to put us in some position where we would be liable for having done something inaccurately that would later cost the town money. Can't the town council make some comments as to the need for this?
It's really entirely up to the board to make the decision. We have two options, we can continue operating through the next election, or you can call it a special election. It's up to you.
And what is the cost of the election?
Approximately $3,000, and what I would do is I'd petition the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer, because it certainly qualifies as an extraordinary and unforeseen expenditure.
In the case, I think of how vulnerable we would be.
Yep.
Yeah, because three on Election Day would really muddy the waters.
You know, go ahead, and then I'm going to finish what Chuck said.
I was thinking, turnout in a February 7th and 8th election, depending on weather, could be horrendous. It doesn't give any candidates sufficient time to really get out there who they are. It's already November 18th. Personally, I think the three months, I think you guys compare up to the task... Personally, I think the three months, I think you guys compare up to the task of carrying through to a normal May 2nd, instead of all of the deficits of a early election, middle of the winter, short window for candidates to make a decision, or to even get their, their story out there, the names out there, just for a three-month window, and the cost is the cost.
Now, it's funny, I'm gonna speak a little bit to how, you know, how I thought about it. Absolutely at first, I felt we didn't need to do it. When I started to reflect upon it a little bit, I started to change my mind. We're heading into trying to, and a fresh face might, might give us some different insight. We're heading into trying to, uh, push forward and put together some sort of police station slash town hall. We have a new field maybe, uh, we have, uh, you know, school committee, new field, school, we've got a lot ahead of us. We're looking at some sort of sewer connection. We're looking at a lot of different issues, and I'm not so sure that maybe someone on the board might not bring in some fresh ideas too. So I started to change my mind. Part of it especially is because of the big push coming in here to trying to put together the engineering costs for, for a spring town meeting on going forward with a new police station. So, um, so I kinda changed my mind, but that's just me, so...
Um, this is kind of a personal question, Mike, but how are you feeling? I think that's a, you know, a big factor in this for me is...
Did you hear what Damon said?
I asked how you're feeling, cause you were in the hospital the last time we had a meeting, and, uh, I don't know how much you're gonna be in the hospital, how much you're gonna be able to be involved, and to me, that's, that concerns me. You know, if, if we go from a four-member board down to mostly a three-member board, I think we're s...
And, and if, and if Chuck, all of a sudden, we're gonna nail each, if Chuck gets called by National Grid, and you're off in New York for, uh, six weeks, or three weeks, or two weeks, and that doesn't get any better either.
You know, if you had a special election, what's the soonest you could see the candidate?
February 10th.
And see, it would be a little different, the owners just isn't totally on you, but Chuck can, you know, Chuck can get called away, right? You're still with National Grid, right?
Yes, I am.
So... So anyway, that's what we have ahead of us, so...
Jeff, what's the possibility of a special appointment just through the May election?
I don't think we can do it.
You cannot make a special appointment, town council has already ruled on that.
I kinda heard that too.
Yep.
I'd ask the same question.
We can do lesser, but not equal or greater, correct?
Well, how about in the case where Chuck is called out of town, or Mike's back in the hospital, don't it? What, what in that case, does that change?
We wouldn't be able to conduct business. We wouldn't have a quorum.
Does that open it up, the election may form by a special?
Not that I'm aware of, the, the town council didn't advise us that there was any way to appoint to the Board of Selectment.
So if you can't conduct business, how is business conducted?
It's not, it stops. That's the concern.
And, and the other thing, too, honestly, Dale, I was thinking, and hopefully Palm Island has clear sailing all winter, so, cause we could have states of emergency. So anyway, I will entertain a motion, and then we can discuss it some more. Did someone make a motion? We got the motion.
So we had a discussion.
All right, now, are we, are we filled up with discussion, or have you got something else?
A motion.
Chuck?
Ready to vote.
Damon?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Of a special election.
Right. Of a special election, aye. All right. So, and on the back of that, Damon has asked, Damon has thought about some things, and he'd like to ask us if we could kind of give him the okay to do a little more research, so, and before we go into some correspondence, go ahead, Damon.
So, I'd thought that it would be appropriate for the Selectmen to do something in memorial for David, um, and one of my thoughts had been to name a trail after him, or a bench somewhere on public property, perhaps the two together. Martha can't be reached right now about the trails going in at Codwell Farms, but that seemed very appropriate, cause it's connected to the river. But I thought, since he was a serving member, we should do something in memoriam of him on town property, and so wanted to see what you guys thought about that, if there are other ideas, if you thought it was inappropriate, you know, see what people's feeling was, and how to proceed from, from here. So, wanted to bring it up in discussion.
So what he's, what he's really kinda saying too is, do we kinda, do we like the idea of a trail, and if we do, Damon would kinda go out and look for what would might be a, a trail that it would be appropriate for?
Get a list of ideas together, and pick one out of it. Any ideas?
Parker River also has an intention of having a memorial of some sort, and we had thought...
Can you move that microphone a little, is it gonna, yep, just move it closer, it might fall off there, Marlene. That's good enough, it'll pick you up.
All right. Parker River also had thought of, uh, having a memorial, and, uh, the board has decided, yes, we'll move forward. We, we had thought about a, a memorial bench, obviously, close to the river would be appropriate, and we'd also wanted to have it be in a place where it would be, be used, the public would be aware of it.
Snuff mill property?
Uh, well, one of the questions I had, uh, and I just thought about this this afternoon, on Central Street by the dam, there's a place, River Right, as you look downstream, where, where people, if they'd been paddling in the pond there, that's where they pull their canoe out. A lot of people stand there and, and fish. And I don't know if that land belongs to Byfield Water District, or, um, Mike DiCaprio owns a lot that stretches further on back, and that little piece of section may actually be part of his land. Now, Mike used to be a, a member of Parker River, and one of our board members, but I wasn't able to find a phone number for Mike, or I would've, would've called him. But we definitely want to do something, if it's something that can be dovetailed with the, uh, towns, that would be good. But as I said, we'd hope that it would be in a place that would be fairly public, you know, quite accessible for people to come and sit down and contemplate the river.
Excuse me, so you're talking at the Falls?
Yes.
At the Falls in Central Street, that, that little rise of land that's right on the backside of the barriers?
Or people standing there.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know the area you're talking about, I can certainly get information on the ones that from our office.
Well, the lot just behind it that runs along the river is Mike DiCaprio, but it was unclear to me about that little tiny piece.
Right. I know exactly the piece you're talking about.
And that certainly is a public.
Well, the public certainly sets on it, and wants on it.
I mean, it's, yes.
And people fish on it, and people paint on it, and people do a lot of great activities there.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm willing to let, and I'll ask the rest of the board, but I'm willing to let Damon maybe talk with you a little bit too. It, my vision might be a little bit more simplistic than big and broad. Because I think Dave, you know, had the ability to look at things, very complicated things in a simplistic fashion, so I think a bench, or an appropriate sign that fits into the landscape is significantly important in how we do this, so, um, what trail were you thinking of?
Well, I know, I hadn't gone too far with it. I know that they'd been planning some, some trails behind Codwell Farms, which is against, is down by the river, so that was my first thought, cause it's on the river, and it's a new trail. But I hadn't looked into it too far, cause I thought we should talk about it before I pursued it.
If we, not that the town has any fear to, to work with, uh, Parker River Clean Water, but does it get messy at all, Tracy, with the town helping to pay for benches, or should we keep maybe the, the town involved in a small sign, and, and Parker River Clean Water in the bench?
We could, it would certainly be appropriate to name in honor of him a parcel of town-owned land, and if Parker River wanted to donate the bench.
This is what I, I checked on, uh, before I thought of this particular land. I first went online and looked at a bunch of granite, you know, simple slab benches, not, not ornate. David was not ornate, but, uh, I found that just right here down on Route 1 in Raleigh, the Swenson's granite locally, had far better prices than all kinds of other things. Depending on the, the length, four to five feet, they, they're $200 for about a four-foot, and maybe, I think, $389 was the other. What then you would have a cost for is engraving the, you know, in memoriam statement, and, you know, I think that Parker River certainly doesn't have a problem with, with the bench. Our members have pretty much said we can consider that. They knew I was going to be coming here tonight, and, for instance, combining, uh, the, the doing the engraving on the bench in memoriam, and it could be, you know, both, as far as I'm concerned, it could be recognizing that this is, uh, an effort by the town and Parker River, since David worked so much with both of us. He would like it more if it were cooperative. Were you there when the woman read his last words at his, literally, his last professional meeting? The, the one graduate student, when he said, his comment after somebody came up with a highly convoluted, difficult thing, he said, "Can't we be more optimistic?"
Yeah.
And I, I loved that. So I, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Well, my only, I, I, I wasn't trying to, you know, diverge the energies, but in the back of my mind, I'm starting to think, if the town puts up a bench and someone falls off the darn benches, the town is gonna get sued, you know, so that's how my mind works, I don't know. So anyway, but certainly if Damon and you wanna work with Marlene a little, and run things by Tracy, I'm okay with that, if the rest of the board is...
It's fine by me.
So this is exploratory anyway, cause we'll have to come back and make a motion the board will have to accept. All right?
All right, good idea.
All right. All right, we have some correspondence that has come to the Board of Selectment, and show you, used to read quite a bit of it, and I'll read as much as I can, and try to give you without changing the intent of the correspondence, and then that way, we won't get caught here for a long time. But, this is from the Town of Newbury Inspection Services, and it is to Triton, and it concerns the Triton bleachers, so this is informational. Uh, Monday, October 27th, 2014, the exterior bleachers at the Triton Regional School were inspected and found to be unsafe, per regulations of Mass General Law. So, and he goes on to tell us why these, um, bleachers were unsafe, and they meet, they failed to meet design loads, and, you know, open space between the benches and, and the footfalls. So there, there's quite a few different things that were wrong. So the bleachers are unsafe, and hereby condemned from further use until such time it's appropriate repairs are made, other bleachers are replaced in entirety, so, um, and as everyone knows, this is part of what the, um, what Triton is moving forward towards with maybe, um, their new field and then, and their new bleachers, so. The second, um, any questions from the board? Any questions? The second correspondence that I have in front of me is something that I have not seen before. It's relatively benign, but what it is, is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Ellen, or Tracy can intercept or correct me a little bit, but it's a request from the Commonwealth, if I say something that's incorrect, for leased space. It's a request from the Commonwealth to lease space in our town, and it's also to lease space if other towns have that space, such as Andover, Bucksford, Danvers, Essex, Charlestown, Haverhill, Ipswich, Merrimack, New Green, Newbury Port, North Andover, PBD, Raleigh, or Topsfield. They're looking for, uh, square footage, it's the State Reclamation Board, what's the definition of the State Reclamation Board? Does anyone know? Got any good ideas? All right, so anyway, that's, that's a board that's well-known. It seems that they would like garage, storage, and an office. So, if anyone that can hear me by TV, or anyone in the audience, or anyone on our board knows anyone, they can go to www.combuys.com and log in and go through the passwords and the fields, and that's the DCA MM CAM thing, it, it's not that easy to get through, but you can find the information if you have a piece of property that might fall into those characteristics. The next thing that his correspondence has come to us, and I was expecting the fees to be higher, they turn out to range anywhere as two to $4, but I probably wouldn't want this type of communication coming to me every other month. It's from Infinity. Dear Chairman and Members of the Board, in keeping with our ongoing efforts to provide regular updates regarding our service, I am writing to inform you that the following changes to our installation rates, which will be effective of January 1st, 2015. So it goes on to say, the hourly service charge is gonna be raised from $33.20 to $35.80, and there's a list, did you count those?
I didn't count these ones yet.
So, but they're really only two or three dollars, but it's just like everything else. For instance, the pre-existing additional outlet, uh, installation service is now, it was $5.60, now it's $6.10, so it seems to be the way of, um, everything that's all around us, so, um, that being said, that's from Infinity. Now, this was a little different, but it's coming to our board, and it is from the home of Mark and Karen, home of 201 High Road, and it's regarding a septic plan. Now, I imagine septic plans are going through the Board of Health, right, Tracy?
Correct, this has been referred to the appropriate, um...
Right, so, without going into a, um, I'll read it because it's come to our board, but what it is, they have concerns that there is going to be a lot, that is a new lot, which could have, um, new construction proposed for it, where there was a 500-gallon septic system, now there's gonna be a 1,000-gallon septic system, and they feel it could be in the 100-foot radius of their water supply, so it was a letter to us, so that we were kind of aware of it, and the letter has been forwarded, as I asked Tracy, to the Board of Health.
That's actually two 1,000-gallon tanks.
Yeah, is it two?
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're pretty good, that is, cause it's a condo, right? Yep, so it's pretty good size. All right, so, um, we have to review the meeting minutes. Has everyone read the meeting minutes? And it seems like Walker, Bear, Damon, and David Mountain were there, so it's gonna fall upon, um, Jeff Walker, Chuck Bear, and Damon Jesperson, so have you, any admissions?
Motion to approve is read.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. We're gonna sign some warrants before we go home? So, um, while we're starting to set up for that, um, are there any meeting updates? Anyone go to any meetings, uh, that they'd like to tell us about?
We went to Merrimack River Beach Alliance, um, there was a few updates.
Go ahead.
Things were...
Yep, if you can remember any of them?
Going right along, the, um...
They discussed, they discussed the jetties insolently, that was significant.
Yes, that was the biggest... Yes, that was the biggest argument of all in my mind, was a 100-foot lapse in the jetty between Salisbury Beach Reservation and the jetty because of one lack of jetty there now and ownership of the property.
Actually, where the jetty was rebuilt last time, the jetty still exists under there, it's just buried in the sand.
The way I read it, it said it's a lack of jetty there, but that's...
Well, you know, either way.
Right.
But like Chuck said, from the cement wall to where the jetty was rebuilt last time.
Right, it's about 100, 110 feet that needs to, is not in the contract to get it rebuilt, so they needed to revamp that. The posts, I believe, are ordered for the ends of the right-of-ways. Everybody's all in agreement with that. And one of the bigger surprises was the shift of sand inside the river from the repair of the southern jetty. And it was phenomenal, we had a couple of air shots from an airplane showing the shift of sand, and it was pretty amazing. It's almost back to the concrete barrier again.
Like it was when they rebuilt the jetties the last time.
The last time, exactly, is what I was just gonna say. So, those are the big surprises.
All right, yes.
Jeff, I have one more thing. We received from the AVCC semi-travel forms that were removed at the October 28th meeting. So I retyped, I typed the forms and they have to be re-signed.
And that's coming to us now?
Yeah.
So...
Now, are these the change of time forms that may be illegal?
One was a change of...
And that we should not have signed the first time, possibly?
One was a change of manager.
Okay, that one is fine.
And one was a change of hours.
Yep.
For a package store.
If you want to execute them, I'll confirm with council that it's appropriate to send the package report goes out. You've already approved it at your previous meeting.
But they were handwritten, so you wouldn't accept them.
Right.
Okay, I know what Damon's gonna ask though, because that was one of the times that was changed.
That's what he asked.
Yeah, so if that turns out to be not correct...
It'll have to be held.
We'll have to do it again.
Yep.
All right, one, all right, sounds good to me. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second? You having that much fun? All those in favor?
Aye.